Start everything on time. The first thing in the agenda, we're going to talk about this dress code. Again, nothing will be decided, this is strictly a work session. Nothing will be decided at all, we're just all discussing and anytime any principal or vice-principal wants to interject into the conversation, you're more than welcome.
I think this is one thing. Since we're not in a formal debate, it's just work session, I don't know if, whatever. But I will thank all the principals there by for being here. That means a lot to me and I know y'all have had a busy day and busy week, so thank y'all for being here. I appreciate that a lot.
I think every school should be represented. So I think for your question, anything on dress code, I think this more applies to the high school. Mr. Apple, I was the one that had the most concern. I think he's got several calls. I thought I indicated you, both principals. So we're just opening up. If you guys want to tell us how it came about, why you done it, we felt like it was in the policy to do it, the way you done it, well, the board has a right to do change policies for whatever you want to do, but Jamie can tell you the proper procedures of that if something came about it. Right now, you're within your, well, within your boundaries, but Shane or Dusty, how y'all done that? You know, the only thing I asked is you do the same thing, and we talked about that. So if you've got aggressive issues, time problems that you're concerned, I think the board would like to hear that.
I'll speak. We started having a problem, I was advocate for him wearing shorts four years ago, but it became, it's become a problem in Goresville High School. That's the only place I can speak of. We, a lot of it's got to do with pads and styles. I mean, I had a boy in school last year that wasn't wearing shorts because he couldn't wear them up to mid-thighs. It's just, it was becoming difficult to police. Had a lot of ball shorts, gym shorts being worn, lift them up and turn them down, and then, once that happens, the girls' skirts start getting shorter. You start having to deal with that issue with other group, you know, what's correct? Here, one inch, two inches, whatever. So we told our kids at Goresville High School last year at the beginning, when we came back at the end of the year, if they didn't correct it, if they didn't correct getting the length back to the knees, then we were going to remove them. That's what happened at Goresville High School. So we made announcements at the end of the year last year that, you know, if you're out of dress code, I finally told Coach Ashy who deals with that, last two or three weeks of school, quit footing with it, we'll fix it this summer. So that's, you get a lot of kids, you won't send them on to this one as far as sending them in scowery at Goresville High School, because we could catch them before they got into school, we'd send them home and they'd be late and tardy, which they start missing a lot of school. Sitting in ISS, we weren't in school enough last year anyway, so we didn't want to send kids to ISS or keep suspending, because it's the same 20 or 30 kids that's doing that. You know, it's, it just became a huge issue at Goresville High School.
It was the same way with us at high school. We're sending the kids to ISS, we're waiting for them to get their clothes ready to change, your boxer shorts are longer than your tee, than your regular shorts that you're wearing. We announced it as well, over and over and over. And, you know, with COVID, we were spending as much time policing dress code. And so Shane, I did call Mr. Blatman, we talked about it this summer and decided that we're going to stick with it going, you know, they didn't fix it, we fixed it.
I'll say we haven't had any problems. This, it's went a whole lot smoother than I thought it would be. I thought it would be, I think we've had the correct two young people that had shorts on at the beginning of the year, and to my knowledge, both of those guys were at school the half a day on Wednesday when all that was addressed with the dress code, they came in Friday, and we haven't had a problem with it since. It's actually cleaned up a lot of the short dresses and skirts that we used to see too. I mean, now they don't have anything to compare it to.
The two or three that y'all corrected, if I'm wrong, was the ones that I've dealt with this year so far, they had jeans in their back, in their packed backpack. They do, they were just trying to save it. And I understand, y'all may have got phone calls, I have got zero. Now, I can't picture anybody else, but no single person's called me and said, you know, "Blatman."
Yes, sir. How many, I mean, I guess this is a redundant reception, but so you felt like it saved your time, you're more efficient? How many on a normal day would you be addressing at this point, just over here? If we hadn't, if you hadn't adjusted your dress code, what would you have done on a normal?
I'd say 10 or more every day. Yeah, I'd say that. I mean, that's hypothetical, I can't, it got to be 15 or 20 kids every day last year at the end of school year. So, you know, it was, became the largest discipline problem in our school. At that time, was that dress code and shoulder pause? Other than those rings, though.
Was it just the two shoulder?
Yeah.
I mean, if you ever think, but, you know, the only thing I can say, I mean, the dress code is rather lengthy, but it's rather specific, but the biggest thing stands out to me is number six in the policy that says, "Student is entitled in a manner which is likely to cause disruption or interference to the operations schedule, the principal take precautions." Well, I mean, that's kind of plain. It's hard enough, we're under difficult enough circumstances right now to have a good learning environment, so we've got a dress code, God. Thank you for doing the right thing, you're in the banner of policy.
Mr. Apple, I think you had some questions.
Yeah, on the shorts. I understand you don't want to wear shorts short, I know. Why? But what about belted shorts, cargo shorts? Shorts?
If you can see.
If you can see.
I don't think we can.
I don't think we can show it.
Yeah.
I don't think they can, but.
Wear them church. You would, you'd be ready to dress code, you know, wear them church. I mean, what's wrong with that? Is that just for you? I don't do anything. What do you think, man?
What's the rule on that, Shane?
Says knee length, knee length.
Boys and girls? Boys and girls?
Boys and girls.
Yeah.
Dresses and skirts are supposed to be knee length. I mean, that's been the rule since forever. I mean, we don't, I don't think we put, we didn't put that in policy, that was, that was before he was one of us, knee length.
I wasn't aware of it.
Four, four years ago, I think I was the one that came to the board wanting to wear shorts, and it was fine for a year or two, but what happens with those shorts, then girls come in with miniskirts on them. So, I mean, that, it doesn't bother me at all.
I think the main issue that I've heard from the parents is the ones that were actually following the rules, they're being punished for the ones that wasn't. And, you know, when they come in wearing the cargo shorts to the knees every day, and that's what they normally wear every day, they feel like they're the ones that's being punished, and the parents don't know really what to talk to them, how to explain that to them. So that's, that's what I've gotten from the parents that's called me.
I, I, I mean, honestly, I wasn't aware of it. I didn't know anything about them on short pause. I just think that's kind of, I don't know. Like I said, I understand what you're talking about, kids coming in, gym shorts, short two shorts, gym shorts, sweatpants.
Well, you know, that's, that's, that's all viewed fine, we send them home, but you're going to start getting calls about, about a girl being sent home for, you know, dresses. I mean, you're going to run into 20, 30, 40, 50 people weekly that's probably going to start being sent home. I mean, I don't know what the number that is where they get to. They obviously didn't get it last year because we were sending them home at Goresville High School, and I haven't had one call. I've had one email, and, well, I did have a call from a person that had a kid in his school with a garbage, which I didn't think was really none of my business to answer, I'm policing much at Goresville. But I've had no one call me from Goresville High School about that policy being changed. I'm sure they didn't like it. I mean, I'm, I'm sure they did, but a lot of that was in, the length of them was in effect long before we, I mean, that was, I don't know when that was.
It was done in service organization.
I don't know when that was. When they determined the length of them, I don't know when that, we just said knee length is what we developed, we tried to follow.
I don't, I don't, I don't mean to, excuse me, I listened to you talk about knee length.
Yeah, shorts come to their knees.
Okay. And then, I said, as men go, what, the dress code, our policy says, and we said the policy changes, maybe races to where we want to vote. But you're saying knee length, correct?
Correct.
And I'm not trying to bait, but here's, this is one thing I read that is a little bit confusing. The Goresville dress code procedure say, "On November 11, shorts and knee length are not permitted." So is it knee length or no?
That's current, that's last year's policy. Last year's policy was.
You're talking about knee length, so I'm trying to get on right.
Yeah. This year, there's no guidelines, yeah, we took that out.
Where's the one at? Right here, right?
Actually, I think you said knee skirts and shorts and dresses, all of that need.
I don't believe we have, I don't believe we have the school board's dress code right here. This is not, this is not the school board's dress code right here.
No, a few years ago, we adopted a policy that was T S B A, and every school does their own procedures.
It basically says, Tommy, something to fix, I won't paraphrase it, as long as it is not a disruption to the school, what the principal or the teacher, if it leaves in discretion within their building, lessons is a little bit different, and it works with them, and they kind of police it. Like, some other system, for example, says four inches above the knee, well, you know, if you're 5'2" versus 6'2", girl, that's a lot of difference. And some of them says, you can take your hands and cup them under the bottom of them. Well, if I'm, argument there is, what if I'm actually unarmed or I'm short? You know, so it's, it's, I think what they're saying is hard to police if you put, unless you put a certain type of shorts or a certain type of pant in there. I think you've got to be real careful when you say knee length or two inches or whatever, it said it's got to be a cargo pant that's non-disruptive, or you've got to be, I think, specific if you do that, to make sure that they're policed.
Mr. Smith, when I started it, it's been, I guess, 15 years ago, that's before we each did our own, and that's when the county all had the same, and then, when I started the debate, it was knee length for like middle school age kids. So when we changed it, like, I left it just because it always, I don't know how long, I just thought it was on, I had it 15 years ago.
I can tell you, I've sat on many, I've been on the board since 2004. In 2010, we spent many, many hours delivering on, debating on the dress code. There were things from shorts to shorts to pledge. And I'll tell, and I'm going to say something people don't like, and I'm going to tell you how I told it then in 2010. Now, this board could do something to fix the problem they have with dress codes. We could fix it where they wouldn't have a problem no more, they wouldn't have to disband.
That's right.
And it's called uniforms.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you right now, in 2010, I was an advocate to put uniforms on every kid, and then you'd stop all this.
Yeah.
And I, luckily, I mean, I come to that, but I'll be realistic, I don't care whether wear shorts or not, I don't care. I mean, I've sat here and I've spent countless hours going through the dress code, setting policy, changing policies. If you want to fix it, put them in uniforms, period. Fix, done, no more dress code. Mate, and I know that ain't popular, I see the looks on your face, I know it's not. I don't care. You want to fix it? Put them in uniforms. I don't care, put them in uniforms. I mean, give them a dress down day on Fridays, put them in uniforms, and then you, they won't have to police it, and they won't be coming back here, and you won't get phone calls.
I gotta do say three quarter thigh shorts down, you know, can be a little higher three quarters.
Some of the main. It's not as easy to police as it sounds, I'm going to just tell you. That's not, that sounds good, but it's not easy to police.
535 kids, how can, I mean, it's all you can do, it's all your faculty can do, it's all, everybody to try to police this. And then what you say may be, may be offensive, might not be offensive to me, because, I mean, we went around and around on that in 2010. An example, one board member saying offensive, I didn't see offensive. So, I mean, I don't say how y'all police it, I don't say how.
It really doesn't, but what comes back to me is having, and Mr. Whittaker and these other people is having to police it fairly.
Yeah.
That's, to police it fairly is difficult to do.
Is it, is it possible to make a picture of a student, you know, you see that, and make it pretty well the standard policy across the both schools and?
They're going to do, I mean, I think we're in agreeance, they're going to do the same thing, whatever they do, but it's still already stopped fair for Shane to do something, Dust to do something.
I agree.
I don't want to.
I agree, it ain't fair.
No, so that's, that's you're doing the same thing, they're both doing the same thing.
Send out handouts, put a draw on it.
What?
Just send out handouts, pictures, silhouette, hatch draw on there, can't be any shorter than that.
Some of the main concerns that the parents that contacted me was, is some of the school functions that, school uniforms that we have for basketball, they wear shorts, and, you know, if they're doing it for school functions, why can't they do it for school, period? So that was some of the things, that some of the parents, which I only had about three contact me, but that's what they kept bringing up, you know, if they can wear it for school functions, why can't they wear it for school?
We weren't allowed to wear any kind of uniform, any of our ball, both of our ones go to class.
And I think what you explicitly directed me is your time, you felt like good kids, you were placing, were in the power class. I don't think they care, I mean, as long as you, I don't think there's an issue.
I think their problem, like he said, the policing part of.
Well, it's like, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but.
Go ahead.
Ball shorts, for example, like your shorts, they're like part pants, I mean, they have a button and zipper, but you take the ball shorts, they'll walk in, and they'll be the right length, as soon as they get past us, here they come rolling out, and their boxes are hanging out lower, and those whales might fall out with it.
Yeah, I understand that.
I'm just saying, and then, then they get sent up to us, one way up to us, we're going to start unrolling it, you know, and it makes it harder and inconsistent.
That's, that's why I'm saying belted shorts.
And I, I don't have a problem with anything the board does, I mean, it's my job to police what? Yeah, I police whatever, it just, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with.
I know, I know what you're talking about.
But what you've told us done fixed the problem.
It's been a lot easier than first.
Because you haven't had any problem. Y'all done fixed the problem. And the only, the only question I had about it, as long as whatever Goresville was doing, I'm on a Smith County High School unit, and vice versa, I didn't want one letting them wear plaid on there, and then the other one saying, "No, you know, yes, you can." I, I wanted everybody on the same page, both schools, and what sound like to me, y'all have got it worked out, because you, David, you want to hear it, when they said that, you said you had, how many of this already this year?
Just two.
Two?
I've had three, and they had pants with them, they did, I mean, they were just testing.
They were just, they were just.
Salt and meat.
Yeah, testing the water.
So, sound like to me, they've got the problem fixed, now, you know, by no more problems than you've had now, if you were telling me you'd had 100 every day, then we got a problem. But it sound like they've got the problem fixed, we just got a few that wants to, as Dusty said, had a few that want to test water.
So they can wear shorts?
No.
No, no shorts at all?
That's the question I asked the question, Colton, and I'm just, I'm just looking for a pager, but never let us say shorts of any kind are not permitted. So, just split hairs there, and let's talk about what Mr. Glover brought up, shorts of any kind are not permitted. And then, you got students wearing other shorts, and parents won't know why, that's not the rational question. If we were saying no, and no means no, you understand?
Listen, when I'm, when I'm getting at, they're letting them wear the ball shorts instead of the class, and me, you went to school, you have to be no, remember that? You cannot do that.
But, like he said.
That's just what the parents that contacted me, you know. Basketball shorts, they were just, they were just.
I agree, I'll put the word basketball shorts.
Are, are we allowed athletes to wear their shorts to class?
I didn't think so.
They're in the gym.
While they're in the gym, yeah, but not athletes that go to next period class.
Cheerleaders, I mean, here's, here's an example, cheerleaders couldn't, cheerleaders last year couldn't wear their cheer outfit to school because it's too short for a dress code.
But the concern from the parents that what they had, you know, even though they were in the gym, or they're at a ballgame, or they're at this, it's still a school function. I don't care either way, but this is just the concerns that the parents that come to me.
But that's it.
But it's still a school function.
I don't understand that argument, I didn't interrupt you, because you got to place basketball in shorts, and you got to play.
I understand, that falls on the two, to me, that falls on the two identities, to me. Dress, dress code is when they're in the classroom supposed to be learning. We've got teachers, teachers supposed to be learning, but when we've got sports going on, that's outside, except for basketball, and they have to wear those type of things.
I agree with you.
Because I'd hate to see, I'd hate to see a bunch of boys down there practicing basketball with their overalls on, you know, so. I, I see all of that, I mean, Hogwarts and, you know, it's in black and white, and if these parents can't understand it, I'm sorry. That's just what I see.
Well, from your point of view, it comes down to what's a disruption.
I.
If somebody's in their football shoulder pads and sitting in class, that's going to be a disruption.
Right.
Same with basketball shorts, and, but if they're in the gym or on a football field without stuff on, it's not a disruption, it's where it's expected to be. So if you're concerned in what your policy says, I think it would amount to a disruption versus not.
But that's not happening, am I correct? That's not happening.
Not this year.
Okay.
Just tell them, start school year, say, "Hey, we need to buy, buy this dress code, we got a board member wants to put you in uniforms."
But make sure you tell them, "Who's the board member?" I do not care, tell them. Okay, anybody got any more questions on this dress code? Okay, I, right now, I'd like to go to Mr. Winkler, you've got to talk a few minutes about this I-Nation.
Yes, I had sent an email to the board members several months back, the board voted on the electronic air cleaning product, and had made a decision on that based on the presentation that was made. Following that, Mr. Smith was contacted by the state comptroller's office, and then they provided a, an open letter, signed off on by several physicians and other healthcare workers and people in the field, that called into question the effectiveness of those electronic air cleaning products. Mr. Smith and I both felt compelled that because the state comptroller had brought that to our attention, that we should bring it to the board's attention. No agreement has been signed at this point as far as purchasing that, the board had voted, not renewed that, but we just didn't heed, and on my advice, well, didn't necessarily want to make that, pull that trigger yet, without the board being made aware of what the comptroller had put out there. I sent you all a copy of the letter, it's pretty straightforward, that they, effectively say they don't have enough data yet to know the veracity of these products. But that's certainly a board decision, as to whether to go forward with that. Certainly would hurt if the board was so inclined, let's see, and give it a little more time, see if there's enough data to show the effectiveness of this before, because it's, you know, quite, quite big money, which was.
I don't think anybody's surprised to see that letter come out, I was not, I'm going to ask you this.
Yes.
That we violated the law.
Not, not currently.
Thank you.
That's, if, we had discussed this in, in two, two areas. One, the bidding process and the acquisition process, and we felt there were two reasons that it didn't require that. Then there was also the second half of this, as to whether it worked, whether it was worth the money, and whether Mr. Smith and everybody was confident in its ability to do what it said it was going to do. I don't know if other districts around us have bought this product or using those products or not. Mr. Smith made a sweet note, but I couldn't, but I couldn't just let this letter sit out there without letting you know what it said.
No, we appreciate it.
The comptroller said it, and it's, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, they don't believe there's enough data, and I think it's, doesn't do what it says it's going to do, but.
I appreciate the comptroller having time to send that, we've not violated the law.
Oh, sir, and they didn't send it to us because they thought we had, they sent it to everybody. I think he was making the rounds, as I understand it, and he approached Mr. Smith, and took us while we get the letter, but we got it, but it was Mr. Ed Sebastian with the state comptroller's office. But it wasn't a finding, it wasn't that we did something wrong, they apparently were contacting most districts because these products were being presented to school boards all the way around, whether to do it or not.
So we, we approved, we approved, we voted and approved the funds, when? Do you remember, Jim?
About last March, twenty nine. People were in March.
And I'm, I'm going to say I'm rather aggravated about this, this is the first time I've heard anything about it. A letter may have been sent out, how'd you send it out?
I sent it to the email on July 20th, everybody's email July 20th.
So we're right here in the middle of the school, and we're talking about COVID, and we got an outbreak, and the central office has got one, we've got it in here, I thought it would work, and now, we don't have it, and we're just now being talked about? Somebody's dropped a bomb. I don't know. And I'm not blaming.
He, he sent it out, sent it out bad.
Something like that ought to be, ought to be a special board meeting call, because that was a large amount of money we was going to spend, wasn't it, Tommy?
It is a, it's a pretty serious matter when the state comptroller comes to your office and makes sure that the board understands. We're not going to do it or not do it, we're just telling you, you better understand what, that's very serious.
I understand, but here it is, August, and I, I just now found out about it, I mean, and I'm not being, but it started in March, and we're just now talking about it, the comptroller, when did the comptroller talk about it?
He said, like, do you?
I mean, we should have had that in July meeting, because we're.
I said it before July.
I know, but we should have had this in a meeting like we got right now, because I think as a board, that most of these guys in here would want to put it in their school system, because it's working.
I don't want to put it in, it's not going to work.
Well, it's approved, and it's F D A, the FFA, I mean, the, the, who is it, the, I don't know, all these numbers are abbreviations, but the, if you fly on a public plane, it's on those planes, and it works, I mean, it's proven that it works. I, I just feel like it's been political, don't y'all, in a sense, because somebody thinks we're trying.
I don't think I see that about that.
Somebody thinks, well, maybe we're trying to pull a slicker or.
But I understand, you know, legal in our position, when the comptroller kind of sends this open letter, and I think there's some litigation there, which is in our business back and forth.
Right.
But when they send us a pretty strong language, we just, that's a board decision, and that, it won't, as far as installation, it's my understanding, it will take zero time already to put it in.
It don't take no time, it don't take no time, does it?
It's laying there ready.
I thought that was one of the best things we've ever done, honestly, Miss Shodders, I thought that was a, a sign, seal deal, because.
But did, how many cases you had the central office so far? Several.
Yeah, we can't, I mean, that's, you know, and again, I'm not advocating, or that's, but we can't tell any difference here, so I don't, I'll be, you know, he would know whether there's some way to prove or deny, it's really hard, I think that's what they were trying to say.
Kelly, we weren't holding anything back, I just.
It's a lot of money, it's a lot of money.
I wasn't going to just ignore that. It was just a matter of his letter.
But all my point I'm getting is, I, I thought it was going to be a, something that was really going to be beneficial to our staff and our students.
It's installed in this offer here.
But that's just it, is, does it work?
Well, we approved, we approved it, we voted on it and approved it here in a meeting that night. It went unanimous, I think, everybody here approved, voted on it.
But we hadn't spent that money yet.
No, no.
Now, that money, that money's not something that's available, because it is a lot of money, that's information, we didn't want you to come back and say, well, you didn't tell us the state comptroller told you, they're not doing it, that's.
What was the reasons he didn't want us to do? He couldn't prove, we couldn't prove that it worked.
Didn't prove that it worked, or didn't work, and it left, he took, what, the other thing was energy efficient, like, was it coordinated on energy?
Serious question, as to whether it was energy efficient, helped with energy efficiency, and the letter says, "We must advocate for schools not to use electronic air cleaning devices," is what the letter said.
I probably, I probably get 10, I probably get 10 different companies a day, and it's the big thing that everybody's selling right now, because you can get it on the, on the, I probably, I probably get ten, I probably get ten different companies a day, and it's the big thing that everybody's selling right now, because you can get it on the, on the, uh, that's where money, and that's a big thing, it's, it's a push from the federal government down, is to do that, so.
So, was we probably, I know you don't know this, but how did he find out about that, the comptroller? I'm not being, we're trying to hide anything.
No, said it.
How would he have randomly known out of one little county out of all this whole state that we've, I'm just getting at that.
You can venture to guess, I think, from what I understood from talking, after Mr. Smith met with him, I call, I think he was talking to, I think all districts were being made aware of this because there was a push or a marketing push to get these products out there, and they sent the letters, uh, causing the school district to jump the gun, there wasn't a lot of data behind it. But I don't send the letter to advocate for one position or another, I just want the board to know, and to be wrong, call the badge, especially after.
Can I ask another question? Since the comptroller has done his due diligence and sent us that letter, uh, and we've already voted to do this and allocate the money for it, following several studies that we saw presented to us here. And nobody on this planet, I don't think, knows one particular thing that's going to end COVID, but it wouldn't have anymore. What's the repercussions if we decide to go right ahead and do it? None?
Mr. Scott, I don't think, I don't want you to think here I are saying to do it or not do it, we just feel like it's going to pay off.
I'm, I'm not drinking that.
That's why when he sent the email out, it's, you know, to gather information.
You see the email?
I guess, I guess not, it was, um, kind of, let me reiterate a little bit what Marty said, but we, you know, we spent a lot of time on that and looked at a lot of research. And I, as I recall, when somebody over here, it's Marty or Baker, that last pack of data we got from them was about that thick. I sort of followed up long reading that night twice, um, and we made as informed a decision as we could to try to provide to, that would help our children and our employees. We haven't violated the law, I mean, again, a lot of comptroller for diligence, but we have violated the law, and we've already voted to do it, whatever, and I don't see why it's his problem.
Yes, sir.
I'm just saying.
He's pretty.
That's the second thing else, I'm just thinking about things, rest.
The comptroller.
No.
Well, hell, why don't we want to spend money on some, why would we want to spend that kind of money on something if we don't know for certain that it works? That's my thing.
When we voted on that night, we all, we can pull the rug off, but we voted yes, because God told us it worked.
Yeah, but we, we may have voted yes, but we don't have to do it.
Well, that's up to, we're thinking to say.
Is something we need to bring back up? Mr. Winkler, does that need to be brought back up, uh, at a later date?
How would you, how would you change it since it's already?
Sure, even if we send it, vote it done.
Hey, Mr. Smith, that money that we got set aside or whatever to do this, can we use it for something else?
Which is something we're using, like, for the cafeteria, the roofs, uh.
Yeah, we can use it.
Stages ago, you know, you, it has to be, it's already approved right now for this, but it can go back, like you said, if it's rescinded and you could spend it every, if that's what you chose to do.
Do we know of anybody that does this in this school system?
I don't know of anybody, but I can break it a list, I'm sure there's some doing it, because there's too much of it out there being sold, so.
What about, maybe bring it up the next meeting, but back, but do an agenda for the next meeting, so they can get a little more data on it, that's where everybody knows exactly if somebody's done it or if several has done it, and what kind of numbers.
I'd like to see them, Mr. E, any Tennessee schools.
I'm not on my phone, I was going to show you probably how many of these I get a day a company says, oh, we're doing it, you know, because I'm sure there's some, I can find some, you know what I mean, just doing it.
Y'all, don't y'all think that'd be the best, bring it, put it, put it back on the agenda for next month, and then we'll have the, uh, some numbers on some schools that have done it, but if they haven't done it, then, you know, are we going to stick our necks out and do it and nobody else has? You know, that's what I'm trying to get at, so.
And to answer Marty's, the, the company has the board's laying there ready to put on, and they say it's a very short, that's reason they have, my understanding, less than two weeks every, we're going to have any, always, you know.
So, so was anybody here at central office come down with COVID since he installed it?
Okay, several cases.
In areas where it's been installed.
Sir.
But work in the areas where it has been installed.
It's just one building.
You're sitting in right here.
Yeah, there's one building.
Yeah, that's the reason I said that, not a reason like that, I don't want to go wear a mask in here.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, if, uh.
And this whole building.
That's what we'll do, I'll put it back on the agenda.
Yes, sir, and please, I don't want the board to think I sent that letter.
Or me, that wasn't their intention, not, we just, four hundred and sixty thousand, whatever, we felt like with the comptroller, they're pretty, um, powerful, or say, least, I guess. They came and made a personal visit here several times to make sure we understood that.
I don't, I don't care if they come here to wait.
That's right.
I was going to figure out that.
So, was that?
It's going to get what we're going to say, it's right here, I don't much care what they're doing there, what I'm worried about is what's taking place, it's a big candidate, that's all, period, install.
So, we could go ahead and do it, couldn't we, Mr. Shodders? If we decided, we, there's nothing holding us back, we've not been told not to do it by the comptroller?
We, we have not been, like, told not to do it, we have been, what was the word again?
Encouraged to look at it closely or something.
With that kind of money, I would really like to see somebody that has a few schools that have put this in, spending that kind of money.
See what their results are.
See, you're right, 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 absolutely, see what their results are, because this COVID's raving right now, right? And if they've got them in their systems and they virtually don't have any COVID in their school system, yeah, let's start it, you know, the next day, get, get on it. But, I, I've got to have some, I've got, I know they didn't have any data, um, well, I know, you know, we had that data, but that was their data, that wasn't data. What I want to see is something that's been installed and how it works.
Well, that's great, maybe, but that data we just had was one of the things that did this better right here was not their smell.
Now, they should have brought.
Yeah.
So, I just think we should have been, but I thought it was.
I'm still comfortable about it if we could get somebody.
It's supposed to be, because we voted on it.
Schools that are doing it, so, is that okay with everybody, we'll put it on the agenda, and we'll make one way or the other. Which is all right, if everybody's agreeable.
But you put it on there to discuss, but we've already voted to put it.
We've voted, we've got our discussion.
We just need to make sure that the board still wants to put it.
Everybody's on, everyone's good part, so.
So, we're going, we're going to vote to support the vote that we took, that we were saying.
But that's what he's saying.
How much was it, how much was it?
Yeah, but we didn't vote, yeah, it's already, it's a discussion, yeah, that, uh.
Hey, Marty, that's a problem, I don't know.
I mean, that's a half million dollars anyway you look at it, and to me, that's a lot of money on something that, uh.
And again, please don't think, I asked Jamie to have a sense of comptroller, I'm not advocating for or against it, okay? We had, we were compelled to bring this year, when.
You're bound to have an opinion.
That's the same thing, Tommy.
Like us.
Shout out.
Is that the same theory, we voted and approved?
I don't care if it's.
Okay, uh, we're running out of time, we need to get on to the COVID topic. Hold up.
You want to just, board, do you want to hear from the principal, we asked him, because we was asking.
I did.
We'll start, and I already, I'm going to start, even though you, you get football practice correct, and I know Miss Rachel's out with COVID, so. She doesn't mind if you tell them that, she said, yeah, so I'm going to start with.
Can I tell them what I am?
Yeah. You can say what you said to me, how you want it.
I, I mean, I, I hate to take up y'all's time, but my thought, and I didn't ask the comptroller about it, but, um, my thought was, you know, you hear so much, well, I, you know, um, you know, around here, you can hear this thing, you want to, depending on where you're standing. I don't mean it poorly, I'm just being honest, because I don't have. And I've heard, you know, this school over here is lit up, and Lord have mercy, that one's on fire, and this one ain't got anybody, and, and and we as board, I, well, I, as board member, do not know the facts of that, because others might, I don't. So, I thought the plainest way to learn it was to ask the people that we run, you know, how you standing, what's it look like, how bad is it, are you okay? Are you plowing under, you know, what, what do we look like, because we don't know, in all honesty. We're sitting in chairs, most of last month, trying to take some kind of policy, y'all out there, right, arm wrestling with everybody, not us. But I, I think for me, uh, to try to decide in any direction about things, yeah, I'd like to hear from the people that are on the front line trying to argue with it and wrestle with all that stuff, I mean, what I get told at the barber shop, that may not be what y'all encounter, and I said, that's why I asked you, and I appreciate you coming around, I'm just going straight with you.
And let me say this before this started real quick, I've told every one of them not to tell me or anybody what they want to hear, you want honest, great facts, we invited, I know the governor talked about that, and we invited the health department to come tonight. We invited, uh, Brittany Scott, him, we've asked every principal, we tried not to thank them, so we want you to hear from them, Scott, we'll let you go, we're going to speed you pretty quick, get through it.
Uh, right now, we have, uh, seven active cases of COVID, of course, well, we've got forty-two kids in quarantine because of exposure, being around somebody, and we have returned fourteen students off of the quarantine. Um, in that, our principal is, she does have it, and we've had two teachers that's, uh, been exposed to it, one of them was positive and one of them was just quarantine situation. We talked with some other people, I don't know that we have it as bad as other schools do right now, but, uh.
Here's the numbers.
Yeah, I just.
Given your numbers in your statement right there, and based on the enrollment and all that, how do you feel your student standing right now, are you in pretty good shape?
Uh, yes, sir, I mean, we're, we're doing okay, it's the second week of school, so we're still trying to get some procedures online and get everybody ready to go. I think our biggest problem is, uh, trying to space kids out in, in a room, you know, so that we don't get kids quarantined, and I think that's a big problem that we face. Um, we have one of the largest cafeterias in the county, I think, depending on some of those schools, but we try to spread them out the best we can in there. So, I mean, we're doing okay right now.
So far, you hold, yeah, thank you.
I'm going to bounce to the side, Dest, you want to go next?
Yeah. I'm old, I've got it, it's right over here, my phone is on, I'm sure I'll play. Uh, we've got a hundred and two that are still out with nine positive, uh, cases in the school, well, that was in the building. Uh, we've got three positive teachers, and we've got three exposed that are having to quarantine right now because of. I say that, I mean, we, we're five hundred and fifty, it's just people, so it's not just, we're not eating up with it, you know, the, the only thing that eventually could run into is our teachers have kids, you know, so when kids go home, you know, that, we had nine teachers today between, like, I had to leave and go get mine. Uh, you've got one that's sick on their own, just, just sick, go to doctor, then you've got some that are exposed and they've got quarantine, so. You know, it could, but right now, I don't think, you know, it's just busy when we do that to build. I think fifty-six would be good for that, or that's all, I think, plenty, plenty, we had fifty-six that we have to follow up.
On a scale of one to ten, one being perfect, ten being disaster, where are you standing right now?
Well, if you'd asked me yesterday, I'd say that I'm laughing, because we did it one in the morning and literally, uh, we was going to eat lunch in less than five minutes, we had another one, but, uh, I, I don't know, I, I would, I feel like maybe five are seen, so I mean, we're just, we're able to hang in there, thank you. We're going to teach kids the best we can, uh, the, uh, I guess one problem we have, as, as Cleveland says, Coach Apple, who's in here, his classes are mostly seniors. Uh, we get fifteen to seventeen in his classes, and, you know, you might get one or two, you know, usually just one of those. Then you go to a Spanish class that's got, you know, twenty-seven, thirteen, there's just not much you can do, it's just, like I'll say, I'll get my speech here, what is it?
Shane?
We have, uh, seventeen active cases, uh, five that have returned, so we've had twenty-two since the start of the year. Uh, sixty-five are on quarantine, and thirty-one is returned. So, we've had about ninety-six that's been out in the, in the first week or so. I think of those, maybe three or four teachers has tested positive.
Same, same question, where are you standing?
Uh, well, we, some rules that's been put in place with masks, we've, we've defined, we've, we've allowed, we're separating kids that wear masks and it's helped us keep, I mean, last year, we had two kids in on a hundred and seventy-six people, so this year, we've had seven, or twenty-one, some is in on ninety-six. So, kids that are wearing masks are separated from kids that's not wearing a mask in the classroom, so that helps to control that case, it's when somebody's positive. Kid gets in the mask group, it's almost going home as a masked person, so we've kind of controlled that a little that way, thank you, sir.
Got a question for pretty much everybody, contact tracing, is that a problem, or is, is that part of the problem for sending everybody home?
I'm going to answer that, I'm back to looking at last year's data, speaking on my school, okay? Roughly a hundred and eighty kids that we sent home last year. Out of those a hundred and eighty, twenty-three of those were household exposures. Out of those a hundred and eighty, I cannot trace one positive test to the exposure. Six of them returned positive due to household exposure. So, what I'm saying, and speaking as a parent, my kids last year got it, probably quarantined ten plus times, one of those a household exposure, never got sick. So, my answer to that is, when we have emails in school, yes, contact tracing, these kids are missing too much school, we've contacted.
Seems like we're quarantining the healthy.
I'd like to speak on the other side of that, for this year, not for last year. Um, I had a positive case, the first, we went to school on Friday, and Sunday night, I had my first positive case. When we came in on Monday morning from the same classroom, uh, on the temperature screen coming off the bus, the child was a hundred and two point two. So, from Sunday night, we did part of the class, and then from that child who went and immediately got tested and was positive, we did a good part of the, the rest of that class, and it left four kids in the class. Since we con, since I was contact tracing, sending the rest home, I've had eight more positives from those kids at home who have not been back to school yet. So, I would say this new strain, I've seen a lot more that we've sent home on the contact trace turn positive.
I think I have, if I can remember, I think I have twenty-four on quarantine. I have three positive tests right now. I have one teacher that has, is, she could have come back today, but she's been in the hospital. Uh, because of the teacher, I think I, and in service, I have four other employees that have got quarantined but tested negative or whatever and have been back, all of them are negative. So, right now, it's not very bad, we're able to cover our people, I have one, my problem is, unlike him, my cafeteria is very small. So, we're trying to go back to normal, last year, we eat in their classrooms, a lot of teachers go up there to eat for lunch. Well, we're trying to do normal, eat in the, eat in the, in the cafeteria, my cafeteria is very small. So, one kid got several kids, and a lot of it was from lunch, I counted today with the way like my sixth, seventh, and eighth grade sit. And depending on where one kid is packed when they're in there, and if one kid gets it, it's one spot, it'll quarantine my twenty-eight kids, if you do the six feet. Um, but right now, it's, other than a couple of kids, it's, we don't, it's not really bad right now, just several quarantine, I've got some quarantines because of household. Um, two that I have out with that are positive because of household quarantine.
Ms. uh, Ms. E.
Well, we have, uh, today, we have, uh, eight teachers that.
How many?
Eight.
It's positive or quarantine?
Positive, eight there are positive, and, uh, students, we had quarant, uh, quarantined a class. Twenty, twenty-six kids in.
Ms. Kipper? White, white, so how's, how's your school standing? So, how's, how's your school standing?
Uh, it's standing, um, pretty good. It, this all started about two weeks ago, although the kids, they were fine and...
Thank you. Uh, we'll back up to the other two principals. I'll go, say, how, how, how are you standing over there, sir?
We're good. We, I think we've done three or four quarantines, um, and one, uh, faculty that, question, took the shot and then the next day, or maybe in that evening, again, gets it. We're, we're in good shape.
Uh, Ms. Pope.
We have three positive faculty members. We have seventeen positive students currently. I have sixty-five in quarantine and twenty-four that have returned from quarantine.
How are y'all staying?
Uh, Friday, I would have told you dumpster fire, but we had those twenty-four come back this week, and so now I'd say I'm with him, maybe on a five or six.
Okay, I'm sure I could go ahead.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to, I was just trying to get a friend to come in and ask questions. Ms. uh, Kittle.
I had my first positive today, don't hit me with this. I had my first positive today. So, stupid.
That's kinda how we're saying it once it hits. Don't, I wish you all bad luck.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I don't, I'm back away.
And I think this is important for everybody that are saying, you know, we're not gonna have a choice back home to school. We've gotta go to school. That's what we're told from the state, from the state. In other words, if, uh, if, if we get five hundred positives, we're either gonna have to tack it on at the end of the year or take, take stockpile, which is snowbaked. Uh, I wanted to make sure the board understands that, the public. And the other thing is, uh, i- if a teacher in the past would try to, been able to be flexible, if they have not had their vaccinations, they have to take their own sick base if they have been quarantined or if they get sick. They under total number protocol if they've had the vaccination. And I said, they're advocating to that, more than, that's a, that's a personal choice. But, but, you know, that is their choice. If they take that, which way, and that, that's the case, the case of Brittany, then we have to go through every night, okay? So, it's not, you're not making a difference to people, but they gotta understand that Scotty's had his shot. He can keep right on working. Brittany's not, you're going to, going to, go talk.
So, you're standing pretty good then, you go?
Uh, yes. My, that one positive, uh, I quarantined three off of that one. One was a brother. And then, uh, thank goodness, uh, the child never made it to the classroom. So, the other two was just being in bus hall this morning, and even though they sat every other seat, unfortunately, that's just five feet between them, so...
What, what happened to the kid that's on the bus?
He's a car rider.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and, and we did screen, take the temperature as he got out of the car and no temperature whatsoever, walked straight to the cafeteria and put his head down on the table and, and never got up. I mean, you could tell he didn't feel good. And so, from the time that, uh, the teacher was ready to come again, we said, uh, uh, one of the teachers, I said, let's go back to the office and check one more time. And he's still not have fever, but he just was, I, I don't feel good, I don't feel good, I don't feel good, so...
Fever's on the one day, one thing.
Right.
Kid tells us they don't feel good, we need to know that.
Right. I'll, I'll, I'll speak to that, because it was me. So, I was at the office, they called, brought me to the office, said, hey, he's not got a temperature, but can you check him? I checked him, he was ninety-nine, three, which does not meet our criteria of a hundred point four and sending him home. But as she said, he was telling us his legs hurt, his arms hurt, his throat hurt. And so, I made the decision at that time that it wasn't safe to put him in the classroom, let him go home for twenty-four hours. Just spoke to them all and said, take him home for twenty-four hours, if he's symptom-free, doesn't have a fever, he can come back. Otherwise, he needs to be seen by a doctor, you know. That's what we're doing for everyone. Mr. Smith is director of it, that's what I'm trying to do. Uh, we're trying to keep kids from being in the classroom and spreading it that way. Uh, so, I spoke to his mom, she came and got him, and sure enough, he woke up today, still having the same symptoms and was tested today as positive. So, it did definitely save us, the fact that the teachers were alert in the cafeteria and the fact that he didn't look like he felt well, and they brought him to have him seen. And I think they were doing a really good job of that across the district. They call us a lot to see kids that have those kind of vague symptoms that, you know, are not just a hundred point four fever, because a lot of the kids unfortunately do not have fevers initially anyways.
Uh, kids we enter, we get...
We were great till today. We had eight out, one returned from quarantine, and since seven-thirty this morning, a hundred and three have gone home. We have seven students who are positive and one teacher.
How you feel like you're standing?
Uh, was great till today. Now, it's, it, it's been a real hard day, but, uh, we'll persevere, we're fine. We'll be all right.
I'm gonna finish up and say this, if it's all right with you. I, I know of y'all had a long day, and I apologize for asking for more of your time to get you to be here, but I, I think you understand my purpose behind it is because I want to hear, I want to hear the fact that, from all of y'all. I don't want to hear, I don't care about the gossip or the distance saying that they heard, that his first cousin told, whatever. And the only way I know how to get that information in uniform way right here in front of all of us is on occasion, ask if I can impose some moment of time, go over and share it with us, so that we've got what I feel like is the most important that we can be about making decisions on things, so I'll apologize for that and, but thank you at the same time for having time to share it. And for me, I can't speak for one else, for me, it is important. And I, I like to hear these thanks from y'all because I don't want to hear all the other, I, I want to hear the fact of the matter, if that makes sense, so thank you for the moment.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
I was just raising my ear. Uh, we're doing our best we can do in the schools and the classrooms and stuff to segregate these kids. What are we doing on these buses? Them buses are packed. What are we doing on the buses?
And the CDC guidelines, like I said, it says their recommendations to the best of your ability, and that's been addressed at from the governor's office now. If the numbers are small enough, they do a good job of spacing them out.
Now, all these buses, they're not spaced out.
Huh?
They're not spaced out on them.
Well, if they're not full, they're supposed to be. But what I'm saying, and they may have Tommy too, started full and then ended up, you know, and then not re-spacing as a, as a, as a loading, you know, they aren't supposed to be sprayed then twice a day and wiped down. I think they're done. We bought those, they're, hell, y'all got one, they're, they're really good. Those boppers are using the hog.
Well, looks like me, we oughta mask them up on the bus, 'cause, listen, they ain't seventy-six feet apart on that bus. I see the buses go by.
No, that's impossible. I mean, that, that was addressed from, from the governor's office now. It's impossible to do that.
I know, I know, I know, but that concerned me right there, because what if you get a kid from New Milton that comes to Goreswell, and the Goreswell kids got it, they get on the bus, now you took from Milton and you took Goreswell, or some, the middle school to the high school. So, I think we got to leave a problem right there, too.
Ms. Chairman.
And that's a...
I know that ain't actually one...
And that's a, and that's a Jamie question, but I'm not sure with the governor's thing yours, did they opt out? Would that be something you can make up still that on the bus?
No, sir. If you did a mask mandate for the buses, presumably you could do that, but the opt-out would still apply.
So, you're right back where you could, other than highly recommending it?
I, I still feel like our main concern is, is the contact tracing. I, I, I believe we need to cut it out, we're sending way too many healthy kids home. Our job is to educate these kids and not play health department. We need to let the health department play health department, and we need to play education. Uh, you know, we're, we're worried about the health of these kids by sending them home, but what about their emotional, uh, and, and social issues that they're having at home? You know, we're sending middle school-aged kids at home to sit at home by themselves because their parents can't take off work. So, they're sitting at home by themselves, you know. One of the main concerns as law enforcement officer is, is a suicide rate with middle school-aged kids and high school-aged kids, and yet here we are sending them home to sit by themselves. And that's a concern from my side. Uh, you know, I've got kids, I've got my own daughter sitting at home right now because of contact tracing. She's completely healthy, nothing wrong with her, no fever, feels great, should be in basketball practice right now, but she's not. And she's missed well over thirty days last year of her education. We're supposed to give them how many days of education a year? What is it, a hundred and eighty?
A hundred and eighty.
She missed thirty of that. These kids are losing their education, and we need to figure out what our job duties are. And our job duties is to educate.
Would it, would it be too hard, I'm just throwing this out here as a theory, is it too hard to bring in different amount of students in one class, one day, set some home, let them go the next class?
That's, that's what we basically done last year, but this year, that or distance learning, it's not approved at the state.
It's not?
Uh, that worked, I mean, as best as it could last year. I thought it was a good plan, idea as far as getting, at least we're getting something, but, but that won't, that's not an option right now, or the distance learning's not an option.
And I got a question, I got another question, Ms. Shodder. I got a text from a parent, and I'll just read it to you. It applies to Goreswell High School, and, you know, we're all here on the, we're all here trying to solve this problem, but I'm only just to ask you, and then I, um, says, I'm wondering why it's okay for one school in our county, GHS, to segregate, uh, masked students from those who don't wear a mask? So, me and you, have we talked about, is it, what's the, they wanna know why one school can segregate students with masks to one side of the room and then, are we doing that at the Smith County High School?
That's not it. That, that's not the value it's supposed to, we're being saying.
Because all schools doing it. Every elementary school, high schools, junior high school.
They all have the option to do it. You can't mandate it.
I ain't talking about mandating, but is it available that all of the masked kids sit on this side of the classroom?
All schools are given the same information...
High schools are being saying.
I'm looking, it's hardly practical for a K two.
Well, no, it's not. They ain't gonna keep them masked on, but if they did, would you separate them?
I, I don't know that we, again, I would make it, I don't think we could, because they're not sitting in a seat that whole class time. They're in a class that whole day, and they're stationed and overalls, and they're, I mean, even if they would wear them, I don't know how...
I know, and I'm just being practical, and I know this is funny. It ain't funny, but you might, some may agree and disagree, but I know people that swear to the Lysol. They, they keep Lysol in their cars and their vehicles, and they keep that sprayed. Have we, is, would that be practical, Tommy, or?
They're spraying now, y'all got hog. Hog, man.
We keep, we keep spraying alcohol, uh, Lysol, uh, we get, we get it from the Bay, I mean, it's sprayed from the Bay, it's up to the ninety-nine, nine, I keep bringing it out.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
We keep that, that's, that's what I pour in here right here, I keep for myself.
Very interesting when we can look at the possibility, you know, I sent you that text message earlier this week about how Putnam County's doing, you know. I've got a list of counties here that are going by that. Putnam to CAM, some are making Warren, Isles, Jox, uh, Knox, all these counties are, you know, they, they quit the contact tracing. That's what they, they, what they do is they contact the parent and say, your kid has been around someone with COVID. It's your choice to take that kid to go get tested or not. If there's no symptoms, send them back to school. I don't see why we can't do that.
That'd be a board, we talked today with him.
Board decision, yes, sir.
So, how did you find out about this? I mean...
I made contacts around the other counties.
What does CDC say about contact tracing, anything?
You should do it. Our recommendation, I'll tell you.
But it says who does it? Does it say the school does it or the health department?
Tennessee Department of Health says the school and health department collect it under their guidelines.
Did we, did we say this kind of, did we say students?
I've got a claim right here, it states from the Tennessee Health Department says, only the health department will determine which student, staff should be quarantined or isolated. Doesn't say anything about the, the school system.
The, the school system has an authority to exclude any student from school due to contact tracing, and then they can turn it over to the health department if they choose to.
It says we may exclude, yes.
Yes, we may exclude, so that's what we're...
It says only the health department will determine which student or staff.
The health department was asked to come tonight. I reported, Mr. Smith, well, I was sent back to the health department upon asking if they would be able to do our contact tracing. They would not be able to do our contact tracing. Kelsey, I, Molly, and the nurses would still have to collect all names of students. We would still do the contact tracing, that's what other districts are doing. I would then have to submit that list to Lindsay Gold at our local health department, and then she would then have to forward that list to a regional person to contact.
But I don't see why we can't go back.
There would be out of our local health department able to contact tracing.
I don't see why we can't do what Putnam County's doing, though, and these other counties. They're contacting, they're, they're doing the contact tracing, but they're contacting the parent and letting the parent make the decision whether to send them, if, if your kid's healthy, send them to school. If it's kid's sick, then send them to the health department, get them checked out. They're still doing contact tracing, but they're contacting the parent and letting the parent make that decision.
That's up to the board. I'm just telling you what we're doing currently, based on the guidelines that they've given us from the CDC and the state. And everything that comes out that's a change, I'm in direct contact with our local health department, and they, they give us guidance on how to interpret things.
And my issue is, is we're not quarantining the kids, we're just sending them home.
That's right.
I went to lunch today, today, and I know, and there was several high school students sitting there eating lunch together. Shouldn't be quarantined, but they were eating lunch. So, all we're doing is sending them home and letting them sit there, or they're going out and hanging out with each other. So, they're not quarantining. I think we need to just let, leave it up to the parents and let them to make that decision because, uh, you know, what we're doing is not working.
How do you anticipate the board to set a policy? Of course they're quarantining.
Do what now?
You said they're not quarantining.
They're not quarantining, no.
Once they leave our apartment, we don't have any authority on that.
I agree, but I mean, what's the point of sending them home if they're just gonna go out and hang out with each other?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a policy to set.
I think they need to be at a school where we can educate them. If they're not sick, send them to school.
I argue that, but it's a, it's a board policy that we're saying that will have that point, so if it's gonna change policy, then it's been on the...
If you made this change, change that direction, I do think that requires a board action. I do think that would have a big specific agenda item. You could set a special call meeting and vote on it.
Yep, they may have a board call.
Yeah, they have a special call meeting, but I've got to poll the board, right, and see if...
There would have to be a motion for a special call meeting.
You could do it by suspending the rules, make a motion.
You could, you could. But one like this, I would recommend that you make this specific agenda item.
So, how quick, so how quick can we do that? Uh, Jamie, tomorrow? Can we call one tonight or later?
Notice, this has to be reasonable.
Sir?
Notice just has to be reasonable, and so, I mean, this is a matter of certain...
It's a, it's a...
Do I need to make, do I need to make that motion now, or do I need to make that motion when we need?
You need to start your meeting.
We're still in work session.
What, what, what is our policy on contract tracing? Do we have one?
The board itself does.
I, I was thinking, we don't have one.
The director's office, you follow CDC guidelines, and they contact them.
We don't have a...
But I mean, I don't feel as if we're following all the CDC guidelines anyway. I feel like we're picking and choosing what we follow.
Well, we're doing what we can recommend, what's said, and it needs to be said, there's several schools doing that, there's several schools doing exactly what we're doing, there's some doing in the middle. Now, I think one of those schools, you may come back and have to go back in the middle, okay? So, that's left to the individual school system what they want to do, rest of the year.
And Mr. Lewis and Mr. Glover arrived, you, you're not quarantining these students.